Okay, I've got six o'clock. Let's start with the pledge.
Pledge the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Clark, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Here. Okay, um, you've got the agenda in front of you. We'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from April 28 briefing and May 2 regular meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Consent calendar.
Nothing.
Okay.
I'll wait till next meeting.
Alright. Visitors and timed items. This is an opportunity if somebody would like to address the council. We restrict it to five minutes. If anybody would like to say anything. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Public hearing off sale of malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine licenses.
Yep, this is our annual list for renewals. The renewal would start July, they go run through July 1st through the 30th, so there's no violations on any of these for this year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Special events license, Wildberry Prairie Winery.
Yep, this would be for Wild Prairie to sell or sample at the farmer's market. And this would be actually located in the Kingburg parking lot. For the dates listed on May 28, June 4th, 18th, and 25th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Are they not going to the church yet?
Not yet, they can't, one over one, because ordinance doesn't take effect until middle of June.
Okay.
They plan to, but I think July.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Old business. Second reading of ordinance 5656.
This will require the city to send notices to all property owners within 300 feet for a variance request. This is the second consideration.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve. Ordinance 656. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 657.
Same requirement for mailing of notices to property owners within 300 feet for conditional use applications.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve. The second reading of ordinance 657. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Standing committee report. Start with the golf course. Hiring seasonal staff.
Yep, seasonal staff that's listed on page 42, number of marshals.
I'll have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the hiring of seasonal staff at the golf course. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Flood repair, repair.
Pay app for 182,041, 33 for work completed to date for the repair of the bunkers and fairways and roughs. Moving along pretty decent. They've got some fairways seeded. Should be done mid to late June. If everything, weather dependent, of course.
Be done and playable? Will be be able to, when do you think we'll be able to play on it?
Um, yeah, we're hoping all the turf areas will be playable. Probably looking at closer to the end of June now. We're still hopeful middle of June, but don't want to be too over optimistic. Bunkers are looking like those will be completed here in the next two to three weeks. So it's coming along really nicely.
Guess that doesn't have anything to do with the pain from what we've already had done.
It's okay.
I'll look for a motion. Motion and a second for the pay application for flood repair project. Any further discussion?
I just made a quick comment. Oh, the, oh, sorry.
There we go. Um, yeah, it's, it is definitely looking good. There's some green coming up. That's, that's awesome. I think we're optimistic if we're going to play it in a couple, three weeks with new grass, but people are dealing with it, I think, fairly well. So I'm, I'm excited to see it. In a month, I think I'll be real excited. Couple of weeks, I'll still be excited.
That was just for bunkers.
Oh, okay, yeah. Where do you bring the sand in from? Just curious.
Um, the sand that we ended up having to go with is from Gregory, South Dakota. So that one passed the USGA test.
Yeah.
Had to go through some testing, so it's the same sand they put in Elmwood at their renovation. So if you played there, it's the exact same sand they have there.
That's, that's good sand. Andrew, Andrew, what are the, what are the numbers looking like? I mean, on nice days, not on days where the wind is blowing 90 miles an hour?
Yeah, it's been kind of a weird start, weather-wise, but when it's been nice, we're, we're busy. Saturday, we had probably one of our best days since I've been there, this last Saturday. So people are still coming out and playing. Obviously, you hear a few comments here and there about it, but we're dealing with it and it'll, it'll be a little bit of pain for a lot of reward at the end.
How many short holes are there?
Um, we have number one moved up, um, three, five, six, nine, 10, 11, and 12. So is that seven?
Seven.
It's seven, yeah. Yep, but every, every hole's playable. Greens are in great shape. The rest of the course is in awesome shape.
That sounds like my kind of course, if it's moved up.
Yeah, I've been telling people, if you want to, if you want to shoot a really good score, now's the time to come out, so.
Kind of reminds me of Keene Park anyways. Where you play parks, but you've got, you know, a few park fours.
Okay, any other, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second for the flood repair project pay application.
Motion and a second.
Need a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Parks and Rec.
Uh, you have the work report, but then it would be pool cashiers. So that'd be a list of seven pool cashiers down there. They would kind of start training next week, tentatively. We plan on opening Saturday, May 28. Just kind of depends on how much training they can get in next week and the weather, so.
You want to go over what, what we discussed for our policy for food now? We've changed it a little bit.
Yep, we moved away from concessions five, six years ago into vending machines, and we're moving away from the vending machines this year. So there won't be any food options down there. Talked to park board a little bit about that, and they were okay with that. We did allow them to bring in some items last year, so we're just going to allow them to bring in a cooler or such. Obviously, no glass, no alcohol, those kind of things. Some kind of stress, you know, to pick up your garbage. But that's the route we're going as we get closer, so kind of this week, early next week, that message will get out there too via text and other avenues.
We just had trouble with those vending machines, and trying to get help is a problem for everybody, so we thought we'd try it this year. Um, a couple of the moms that go to the pool are on park board, and so they felt comfortable with that, and at least to try it and see if we, you know, if people like it, it'll save people money, so.
So who's running concessions at the, uh, all diamonds?
They, I don't know if it's Dynamic Dance, Dynamic Dance. They do it for, contract, yeah, thanks.
Do it.
They do it, nice job.
Okay, we need a motion to hire pool staff. Motion and a second to hire pool staff. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We also need a motion to hire summer rec staff.
Yes, this would be the summer rec staff for the summer. They, the program date runs June 7th through July 29th up at Brandon Elementary.
I would make that motion here.
Motion and a second to hire summer rec staff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Public safety. Police report.
Nothing unusual unless you have any questions.
Okay. Wage adjustment for Michael Hanning.
Yep, Mike is a detective in the police department. His anniversary date is coming up.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Michael Hanning. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Safety Town Director.
Yep, Safety Town is, will be starting again in June, I believe, June 6th. We're recommending that we hire Vicki David. Vicki is, was on the council at the time. She started the Safety Town program last year, ran it very well. She's also an elementary teacher, so we're recommending that we hire Vicki to run the program again this year.
I'll move to hire Vicki David.
Motion and a second for the Safety Town Director position. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question on the $1,000. Is that enough to cover wages, supplies, marketing, everything?
No, there's, there's a different category for supplies. It's just $1,000 for wages.
I see Vicki's here. Do you have anything to add, or do you feel that's sufficient? I know you put in a lot of time in addition to just the event hours.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's very nice. Oh, sorry. Vicki David, 2809 East Sunflower Circle. Formerly where Colin's sitting, that was my seat, just kidding. No, I think, no, that's plenty good, and I just want to say thank you again, because this was a dream of mine three years ago when I came to most of you here, and was appointed on city council, is this is something I felt strongly in doing for the community. And thanks to you guys, and Brian, and Christina, and Chief, and the police department for believing in me, because most of them did not know what Safety Town was, wasn't quite sure of it. Unlike Colin and myself, we're graduates of it. We knew what it was, and so I feel really fortunate to have the support that I have had with the city, and I think it went really well last year, right, Chief? Chief did amazing. He painted the buildings. Officer Sarda and Chief got the blacktop painted, and Dr. Larson with the school district has been very supportive and is allowing us to use Brandon Elementary again this year, so. No, I think it's wonderful, and I, again, thank you for the support, and any questions, if you have any, I'm willing to answer, but.
How many kids are you going to try to get?
We tried to do 30. We're off, we're starting off small, just because, last year we had 30. This year, I think, we're at 14, right?
So far, yeah.
So far, and I know, like, I kind of compare it to when I call, like, Yankton, and then Brookings has done it for nearly four years. They have a morning and an afternoon program, and they save about 250 kids a year. But I think the officers and Chief and I are all like, okay, let's take baby steps. Let's get the ground running and what we want to do, and hopefully continue to grow and add more session times. Right now, it's just in the morning from 9 to 11.
Vicki, then, like, they go through once, or they repeat? Do they, like, a kid that went through last summer, he might come again?
They want to. It's for five and six-year-olds. They certainly could.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't hurt. I mean, you can never have too much safety training, right, Chief? Right? Never going to have too much, so I think they could, but every day we focus on a different skill, and we have different speakers that come in, and we have had Chief Dykstra, also works for the Sioux Falls Fire Department, so he was able to bring in the firehouse, and we've had MedStar came with the ambulance, and we had Kelo come talk about weather safety, and we did the bike rodeo, and we, they had little ID cards, and we did fingerprints, and, yeah. So we had, I mean, every day, and we did animal safety. I think this year might try to get in railroad safety. So there's a lot of, you know, crosswork, crosswalk, sorry, crosswork. And then we did bus safety, so we had the school district, David Moody with the Brandon Valley Transportation came, and they got a little bus ride and was able to know how to act on a bus, right? And be responsible and respectful on there, and so trying to think of anything else. We even had a VFW come out, and it happened to land on Flag Day, so we talked about the importance of the American flag and respecting it. They cover everything. And then poison, we talk about poison. Yeah, so it's really, it's a lot of.
Humane society.
Yep, humane society with the animal safety, so. And then we have a nice little graduation at the end. Brian was there last year, and so was Dave, and we're, and Chief, of course, and stuff, and so they get to go through a line and shake hands, and so it's pretty fun. Well, I'm biased. I think it was fun, right? Yeah, right? I'm looking at those that were here. It was fun, right? Dave, you're looking at me. It was fun, right?
I think about it all the time.
I know. One of your fondest memories, I'm sure.
It was, it was good.
Yeah, no.
And what's, what's the date on that, and then, what do, what do parents usually do? Do they just leave, drop their kids off?
So initially, the first day, we'll send a letter out once we have everyone, telling them, please, the first day you drop off your kids, stay with your child. They do have to walk to us. We're out on the blacktop. Every morning we meet by, we have a flag that we put out. We meet out there. And then we have youth volunteers from different, usually it's the churches I can gather the youth volunteers from, and they help us with crowd management, I like to say. So myself and Officer Sarda will each have, we divide the group in two, and so we each will have a group of kids at one time. He might be working on skills about this town, so to speak, and then I'm in the, inside, in the classroom, working on the same skill, and then we switch, and then we have our guest speakers and stuff. But parents, yeah, they'll be notified. They just come in, they can drop their kids off after they check in with us, and then they're free to go. June 7th through the, is it 16th?
6th through the 17th, I think.
Or is it the 6th, the Monday? It starts on a Monday. Is it June 6th? Through, yeah.
9 to 11. I did do a post on Facebook today. Thank you for those pictures. I think that'll help, because I think people, to try to understand what it is. So I did put that out there, because we do have 16 openings right now.
I wish we could send some adults through that.
Thank you.
Hey Vicki, I used to be involved a little bit up in Dell Rapids. Who's doing the railroad safety stuff, or who have you talked to?
Um, Kipley gave me his business card, so I think I'll reach out to him with Ellison Eastern, since they're going to be running through here. So he told me there was a guy that, he's like, just email me. He gave me the card, so that's who I was thinking. Because I, we did a parent survey at the end of last year, asking parents what they liked, any thoughts, and that was one of them that I think two parents put on there, and I'm like, well, that makes sense. You know, some put farm safety, and I guess that could be another one. It's just, that might be in the future. I'm just not sure how to incorporate that. But definitely with the town, I think railroad safety would be a key thing with these kids, understanding that, staying off the tracks and stuffs.
Yes. So the graduation will be on the 17th on that Friday at?
At Brandon Elementary.
At 11:00.
Nope, it starts at 9, and so that, we get done it that day a little bit earlier. So we start at 9. We let the parents go with and go, and we break them into two groups. They get to go with their kids, and they get to see what they do on the town and what they do in the classroom with me. And then they sing their little songs for them, and then we give them a T-shirt and a little graduating hat, and then they walk through the line.
Okay, thanks Vicki. Good job. We've got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Administration.
Uh, communications report for the last couple of weeks.
So I was running across some old papers. So we had sent this out last year, all the listing with the bill. I think it clicked.
Came out in July. That was really helpful, because then I went through and made sure I was signed up for everything, so I don't know if that's something we want to do again, but I, I didn't.
The next couple of months are slated, but we'll get it out. And quick on, are you done?
Yep.
Okay. Quick on communication. I'd sent a note in. It was kind of later today, but I was hoping we could put something out on Facebook for National Police Week to give residents a little platform to pat our well-deserving officers on the back, show their appreciation. Would that be possible? Because my suggestion would be that it comes from the city instead of the police. Okay.
Anything else?
A quick question here. This is, um, on the communication report, you get down there a ways, and it says, uh, notification bar.
Yeah, so on our homepage of our City of Brandon site, at the top, there's a notification bar that will come up.
Along one or? Yeah.
Yeah.
Wage adjustment for Christina.
Yep, Christina's anniversary date is coming up here.
Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. And a wage adjustment for Tammy Vanderby.
She has our payroll specialist anniversary coming up at the end of the month.
Likewise, move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Tammy Vanderby. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign for oppose. Motion carries. Block party request.
For the 700 and 800 block of North Copper, all of the residents have signed, all of the affected residents have signed the application.
Copper, copper.
Uh, it's up in Stone Ridge, the railroad tracks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Change time of the briefing meeting. At the briefing meeting, we talked about, um, changing the time to late afternoon as opposed to evening, from 5:30 to 4:00. And I think the process, the thought process was that, that it might even be better for, you know, right now, all the public meetings are at night, and having something in the afternoon wouldn't be a bad thing. It might actually reach out to some other people that can't come at night. And so that's what the discussion was. Do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll, I'll move to approve the, the time change on briefings from 5:30 to 4:00.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve the briefing meeting time change from 5:30 to 4:00. Any further discussion?
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, that's the next meeting.
Yeah, it would take effect at the next briefing.
Okay.
So, and this, this would involve briefing, so I'm going to tag it on. Do we have a policy, a weather policy?
We, we don't.
Okay, so here's my concern, and I think we probably would have done something different if it had been a tornado warning, but we've got all our administration, top administration here, all the city council members and the mayor in one building, when we are under a weather alert where they're saying, do not go out. So I, I think maybe we need to practice what we preach and be careful and not get everybody in the same room, because I'm telling you, this place would not survive. And if you guys ever saw that show Survivor, there's a lot of bad stuff. So I just wonder if maybe we only do it when it's a tornado, but I think we need something.
I'll see if we can borrow something.
I don't know, the basement over there is really, oh, yeah, we could build there.
Yeah, but the rest of the building, no, I won't say that. Yeah, I, before, before the meeting, I had actually called down and questioned whether or not we should, we should do it as it was. The storm had passed before we even got down here, but I, I think we can use common sense also, and I don't know if we need a huge policy change in a, in a case like that, or if we can just come to an agreement to say, yeah, if there's really, really bad weather projected, we can either cancel, postpone.
Well, yeah, you can't hold it that night. You've got to get 24-hour notice, so if you move the meeting or change it, it's going to be at least 24 hours later.
Well, other than that statute, like, that does have some absent circumstances, and if they just think if you had to cancel because of a tornado warning, you might, you might. You really need to do the briefing meeting.
Yeah, otherwise, I think it's just, it might be just up to individuals. I mean, common sense, if you don't feel comfortable going out in it, in, in some severe weather.
Well, it wasn't that I was uncomfortable with it. I'm more concerned about having all of the leadership in one room.
No, I, I know.
So, you know, that, that was my concern.
Right. I concur.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Streets.
You've got the work report. And then we move on to seasonal employees for the public works department. You've got a list of six seasonal employees to be approved.
Move to approve.
One second.
Motion and a second to approve the seasonal employees for the street department. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Core area phase two payout.
This is the first pay application for our core area phase two to Sukup Construction. It is a pretty large one at just under 410,000. They do have most of the utility work done in that first phase, so water sewer, and they're working on their storm sewer. And so pretty soon, they'll be shaping up the road already, so they are a couple of weeks ahead of schedule. They're doing really well. Oh, and one of their subcontractors is SiteWorks, and SiteWorks was in town and helping all the residents in that area clean up after the storm. So that was a really nice thing for them to do.
Okay. Need a motion?
And second.
Motion and a second for the pay app for core area phase two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Core area overlay project.
Uh, this is the change order for the core area overlay project. Remember, we bid this out thinking that it was going to be in that $350,000 range, and it came in really good at just under $200,000. So we added a few more streets and pretty much doubled the project size of it, and still stayed within our budget of 400,000.
Need a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the core area overlay project change order.
So Tammy, do you anticipate that this will affect our CIP priority list?
No, I really don't.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Uh, transit system. Excuse me. Pay app for, yes, excuse me, application one. Number five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the core area overlay project app one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, transit system.
Yep, Rock, who operates our?
Thank you.
Our transit system every year. Yep, rocks who operates our transit system. Every year they have to prepare a budget request for the state and federal dollars for the 5311 and Title III funding. So on page 79 is their proposed budget for the year. And like I always indicate, this is just proposed. To date, DOT has not fully funded any applications that we've submitted, and we will find that out later.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
So Brian, do many smaller towns have bus service like we do? Are we unique?
No, South Dakota's unique in the region with the bus services that many small towns have. Dell Rapids has one that's operated, I think by Brookings now. You know, I think Janklow started it with free buses to communities back in the 90s. So this is highly unusual that cities, you know, when we got, we're probably, what, 5,000 that operate a transit system. There are regional transit systems in other states. And larger communities, Mankato, Twin Cities, et cetera, have their own bus systems. But you don't see a lot of bus transit systems in smaller communities of our size in other states.
I think it's an excellent service that we provide our elderly, but our young people getting back and forth to school.
Primary users are the preschools.
Right.
We do get requests, a couple of things for the newbies. Couple of things, we don't, the transit system doesn't leave the city limits because it's funded partially by property taxes. So we don't necessarily want to send those folks shopping in Sioux Falls. And then we don't do any school, public school pickups or drop-offs. That's up to the school transit system to do.
Any idea on the number, how many actually use it?
We'll get some numbers.
I can get an update from her.
Be interested to see.
If I'm not mistaken, a number of years ago, the Feds had quite a bit of funding for transit systems. Sioux Falls, I know, got a pretty good size of number. That was kind of a broad transportation, general funding bill.
It is. And it's always dependent on the transportation bills or laws that are passed to Congress. Fortunately, I think it was two years ago, we got a new bus, which I think we paid 20%, which isn't a bad deal.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Water and Sewer.
Resolution 1622 authorizes the mayor to sign an application and payments for the West Side Sanitary Sewer Project. We're putting in an application to the state to DNR for ARPA funding for the West Side Sewer.
Need a motion?
Yep.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 16-22. Any further discussion?
I just got a quick question, and don't take any offense whatsoever, but why the change? Why do we need the change? What was it prior to this?
What change?
We're just submitting an application to help pay the costs.
No, that's not, I'm talking about having the mayor sign though.
Oh, the mayor always has to sign it.
He always signs the DNR application.
Putting the name in place as opposed to...
Well, yeah, any of the, yeah.
This resolution is a request of, it's required for part of the application.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not smart enough to take any offense.
Yeah. All right, that's all I was wondering.
Any further discussion?
Just red tape. Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. West Side Sanitary Sewer Pay App.
This is the sewer project that goes from the Big Sioux River to the west side of town. Helps service Hague's development that's out there. This is the first pay application for just under $700,000 at Tom's Backhoe. They do have the borings done underneath of Holly and through the railroad, so they're just laying pipe and setting manholes. It's going pretty smooth.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the West Side Sanitary Sewer Project. Any further discussion? This all in budget? Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Number three, the Water Tower Pay Application.
This is pay application number 11. They've been working on the water tower for some time now. That's to AB Contracting. AB Contracting did request CB and I, they're our structural engineers, to come out and assess the damage that happened last Thursday. They've been on site for a couple of days. They will stay on site for a couple more days, and then they will come up with a report that states the damage, and then we'll present that to council as well. So once we have that document, then we can figure out our next steps of how we are going to have them repair it. Just to note, this tower is under construction, and so it is not filled with water. It is not connected to our system. Nobody should feel any kind of difference as far as water pressure or water quality or water quantity. The city has insurance along with the contractor, so we will come up with the next steps and plan accordingly.
Tammy, was it just from the wind, or was there a crane there or something?
Yeah, no, it was just the wind.
Just the wind?
So, what I like to tell people is the example of like a grain bin. You know, you always see those whenever there's a storm, just because if they're empty, then there's nothing structurally to keep it in place. And so there was no water in it. They didn't have the top. They didn't really have a bottom to it, so...
Where did you hear that of the crane that fell?
Social media.
That's what everyone thought at first, because the crane was on top and on that side, but the crane did not fall on it.
And you mentioned insurance. They also have builder's risk insurance in addition to the regular, okay.
Yep.
And they're bonded, performance bond, et cetera. It is a construction site, so the contractor is 100% in charge of the activities and damage on that site. So at this point in time, you know, we're kind of out of it. We're just waiting for their analysis. They were there on Thursday night as well as Friday, and at this point in time, they have not indicated any safety issues or structural issues that would cause any concern.
I'm just really grateful that no one got hurt. And I would hope that people would look at it from that standpoint.
Is there any possibility that this is gonna come back on our insurance folder, or...
It should not on the city's.
Yeah.
No, like I said, it's a construction project, just like the Core Phase Two project. Anything that happens on there is Sukup. The general contractor is the one that is going to be liable for any issues, damages, injuries, et cetera.
Yeah, we add the piece of equipment or building or tower once it's complete, or once they have the final application is when we add it to our insurance.
Now, I'd anticipate they may come in with a change order after all is said and done for a time extension. You know, it takes a significant amount of time to remake that bolt up.
Like six months maybe.
So I would anticipate something coming up.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the Water Tower Pay Application? Excuse me. Have a motion?
And a second.
And a second? To approve the pay application? All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. The number four is a PRV installation project. I'm not sure what that is.
So pressure-reducing valves. We have to install these pressure-reducing valves to every home east of the golf course. That is due to the new water tower. So this is the first pay application. They are having some, like, a hard time getting some of the materials. And so they will be requesting a change order for time extension, which...
Looks like they got time.
Obviously, we have some time, so... Other than that, though, the project's going pretty well.
Okay, need a motion? Motion and a second to approve the installation project pay app. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Water Meter Replacement.
Water Meter Replacement, this is pay application number one. They are about 70% done. But I will warn you, we're down to the fourth notice and the door hangings and all of that. So we're kind of to the point where that if they don't make appointments, then we'll have to shut them off. So I think there's only been, in the past, that one we've had to. But I will warn you that door hangers will be going out either this week or early next week for that, so...
Okay, need a motion for this?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second for the Water Meter Replacement Pay Application. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. New business. Do we need an executive session?
Nope, not that I know of. You've got the financial reports at the end of the packet for you. Fund balance report, sales tax remains strong. You know, we're looking at the general fund sales tax, about a little over 17% increase over last year.
Saw that, pretty terrific.
So it's still, it's still running very, very good.
What was the year you were prior?
A year prior, we were up 19% over the year before. So if this trend continues, you're looking at maybe, we'll be up a million dollars in two years in sales tax revenue.
The one I watch is the Third Penny, and that one's up substantially. That's like where we buy, like, that's where we can buy our parkland from and some of those kind of things. So that's really important to, as I always say, drink local.
Any other business to come before the council?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose.
Nowhere close, nowhere close tonight.